It is my, my role this evening to open the meeting. So Larry, you can blame me.
And I will.
So I'll declare this meeting of the Shasberry Elementary School District open. And I need a confirmation of the new members. Have you both been duly sworn in to your positions? Good, congratulations. So now that I've established that, nominations are in order for the Chair of the Shasberry School District Incorporated Board of Directors. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Kenny.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll second it.
Okay. First of all, are there any other nominations for Chair? All right, seeing none, I am going to close the nominations. There is a single nomination and motion. Do we wish to elect by?
We don't do the papers.
You don't do it?
No.
All right. So then if I see all in favor of Fran Kenny's nomination to be the Chair of the Shasberry School Board, raise them please. Two, three, four, five, out of five members. I'll declare that unanimous, and I will list Fran Kenny as the new School Board Chair, and I will turn it over the rest of the meeting to you. Congratulations.
Okay. All right. Now we need a nomination for Vice Chair. And I'll, I'll, go ahead.
I'll nominate Larry if he's willing to continue.
I'll second it.
Second it? No?
Jen was.
Jen was.
And nominate Larry.
Okay. And Holly seconded it. Yeah? Any discussion at all? Any other nominations? Don't think so. Okay. So all in favor of the nomination? All right, okay. Unanimous. All right, now we need a Clerk. And is there any nominations for Clerk? I will nominate, well, Dave, were you gonna?
Could you spell that, Dave?
I was gonna nominate Dave Durfee for Clerk.
I don't wanna be prejudiced, but I was the SCSU Clerk last year, and I might be asked to do that again.
I'm sure you're gonna be.
And I don't necessarily need to be Clerk of two boards.
Okay.
So if somebody else would like to be Clerk, maybe.
Well, then I'm gonna nominate.
Is it possible to hold the two positions?
You can. Yeah.
Then I would accept that if nominated.
Okay.
If neither of the other two are eager to.
Well, Dave gets a chance to renege, so he.
I'm saying, if somebody else is looking to.
Okay. Then I will nominate Jeff Leek. It's not a big job. We're not trying to.
As you know what to do.
I need a second. Okay, Larry seconded it. Any more nominations? I don't think so. Okay. All in favor of Jeff Leek as Clerk. Unanimous. Okay. Let's see what's about here. SU Directors, I would like to nominate myself and Larry as the SU reps. I guess I need a second for that, don't I? Yeah, I need a second for that.
Second then.
Second, okay. Anybody else? You're gonna be on it from MAU. Oh, I know you are. Anyway, okay. Seeing no more, all in favor of the nomination. Bye. Okay, unanimous. Let's see, committees.
You may not have any standing committees. I don't know if you do.
Okay, food service?
I don't know if you've had any representative to that or not.
We did have, Jen used to be the, do food service. Technology?
Policy.
Policy.
Oh, policy. Yeah, okay. I will nominate Holly Bann for Policy Committee.
Second then.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor of the nomination? Okay, unanimous. And I think if Holly needs some help, Larry, could you help with, with the Policy Committee? You could be kinda like an alternate. Thank you. Till she gets her feet wet. Yes.
I have been on the Food Service Committee.
Yeah.
For MAU, so if I'm continuing to do that, I will report on.
Oh, so will you do, then I can put you on Food Service then if you'd like, if you wanted?
Sure.
For Shasberry? Are you gonna be on it for MAU anyway?
I imagine so.
Okay. All right, good. Okay.
Do we need an SU alternate?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We do.
I'll nominate Holly for SVSU.
Okay. All right. I, I will second that. All in favor of that nomination? Okay. You got, yeah, good. Unanimous.
Am I allowed to go and, and get my feet wet? I know you.
Yes. There'll be other people there anyway, so you're, you're not gonna be the only one getting your feet wet.
I don't wanna.
Okay. Well, I think that's it for right now. Oh, now ESP, you're not doing that, huh?
No, we're not negotiating.
And we have teachers.
We already have teacher negotiations currently going on.
I'd like to stay on the teacher negotiations.
I'll nominate Fran for the teacher negotiation.
Yeah, thank you. There's a second, Larry seconded it.
Are you on that from another committee then?
Yeah. He is. Yeah, he'll be on there, so we'll keep him on there for, so we keep the same people.
Is there an education?
Okay, all in favor of that nomination. Unanimous. Okay. And I think that's it. Philly's out after, so you have that.
Okay. Well, we're still having.
Okay, yeah, good. Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. We're all set here with reorganization, so I will start off with citizens' comments. Tim?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the fifth grade parents who asked the, the School Board to help out with their attempt to get the fifth grade to Nature's Classroom this year, that we indicated that we were gonna continue with our fundraising efforts, and we have, and in the last month since we've spoken, we've raised almost another $3,000.
Wow. Perfect.
The request that we made is dropping all the time, and we've uncovered a group of really excited and animated parents who are eager to see this go forward. We have a couple more fundraising efforts planned, so the check we ask you to write is getting smaller all the time.
All right. Sounds good.
Can I say Fran too? Since the article appeared in the paper about the conversations that you initiated a month ago, this meeting, several people have come to me and said, "What a great thing that Shasberry's doing."
Oh, yeah. I think so. I, and it's a good idea, so.
And if I could just make one personal note, a number of us have been talking about this trip since first grade, particularly because the Donkers, as they indicated at that meeting, had been interested, had known about this program, and interested and wanted it to happen for our fifth graders for a long time. But as push come to shove, you know, with all the fundraising that happened, like we were doing for Starbase, which had previously been funded other ways, and other things that happened, a number of us had started to get discouraged that it was gonna be possible this year, and were talking about maybe just sending our kids with the Woodford Group and not being able to make it. And my wife Jennifer decided that that was not the answer that she wanted, and she's the one that stepped up and really reorganized this effort and got a whole bunch of people involved who hadn't been involved in a lot of activity at the school before, and she delivers a lot of credit for making this happen this year, for the, for the whole class.
Very good.
Thank her.
I have been times.
Okay. Thanks. Is that it? Anybody else? Okay. And introduction of new board members. I know that we have Jeffrey Leek in the middle, and we have Holly Bann on the end. Both Shasberry residents, obviously.
I go.
Yes.
Really check that.
Just wanted to make sure I said that, because we've had. Whatever. And we've done that. Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I wanna tell you a few things that we've been working on, a lot of, and some of it'll probably come up in your principal's report too. Before I do that, I do wanna mention, as someone who was an advisor for Nature's Classroom and traveled with my students when I was a teacher many times to Nature's Classroom, I do think it's a beneficial program. I don't know which site they're actually going to, but.
Weber Bay.
I don't know where that is, but it's.
In New York.
New York, yeah. So I, I think it's worthwhile. I think your students are gonna have a great time, and when they return to school, it does, I think, change their perspective and add some leadership qualities to your students too. So I think it's a great program to get behind and support. Negotiations is ongoing. You know, I'll, I'll beat Fran's drum for them. Negotiations are in open session for the first time ever. We haven't had anyone from the public there yet, but we did have a banner reporter there this week. I think there's meaningful dialogue taking place. There've been a number of language parts of the contract that we've agreed on, but not gonna fool anybody, we're just starting to get to the more difficult parts, which would be health insurance, and no one has discussed wages at any point yet. So it, good, open communication, both sides, I think, have very good teams there, so I'm encouraged by that.
Question?
Yep.
Where's the information that says when and where those concessions are happening?
They're published like, just like we do any open meeting. The next one that'll be published will be the Monday, the 23rd of March, and it's held in the Assembly Room at the Creative Development Center. So that should be posted like any other meeting that, that we have, so that will.
Is it on the SVSU website?
It, just like our other meetings, it will be. Yep. But four o'clock on the 23rd.
I think they're listing banners too on that.
I believe they are. Yeah. Yeah, they should be.
Good.
Yeah. I have Joyce Cox, Joy, Joyce, I don't know where I changed your name, sorry. Joy Cox here this evening to speak to you. We're gonna need probably an executive session at some point to talk about off-contract employees. That's why she's here this evening, so I'm gonna give some time for that. I'm assuming you'd probably rather do that at the end.
Do it right at the end, yeah.
Yeah. She's been doing a lot of work on, as when we told you, one of our projects at the SU this year is to try and standardize benefits for off-contract employees, and we also are beginning to look at what a salary grid would look like and to try and standardize, 'cause I'm, what's, what's the number of total off-contract employee? Did you say 80?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. So that, and what we mean by an off-contract employee is somebody who's not a member of a union or association. So their contracts can vary widely with our teachers and par educators, because it's a negotiated contract. It's pretty much standardized. So from a point of tracking things, that, that's been a major project that we've been working on for this year. We did have a legislative breakfast Monday morning. A little disappointed with the turnout. The administrative staff and School Board members overwhelmed, the two representatives who were there, they held their ground. I don't mean that they were born, but I, I'm hoping that when we have this again, that we will have better attendance, 'cause there's, there's so many issues, particularly with what's going on up in Montpelier right now, that we really feel we need our, our voice heard on that. So the next scheduled legislative breakfast would be Monday, March 30th, and we originally scheduled it at the Creative Development Center, but it's not available, so it will be at Central Office, but we will send out email reminders to, usually to the Board Chairs and to our state reps. It is an open meeting, welcome, everyone is welcome, but because of the size constraints, we don't really encourage every board member to come unless they have something specific that they wanna be there. But again, everyone is welcome. The, it, it doesn't affect Shasberry Board directly, but it does affect you, the principals, high school principal search is ongoing. There, we're down to, the screening committee has completed their work and given me two candidates to interview, and that is taking place this week. The MAU Board Meeting is next Wednesday. I'm, since I haven't completed interviewing everyone yet, I really don't know if I will have a recommendation by that date. I think it's probably growing unlikely because of background checks and possible site visits that still would have to. We had set the goal that we would inform, I would make the recommendation to the MAU Board at their March meeting, but we're falling a little behind. I wanna make sure that we get everything done correctly, and I, I spoke with the Board Chair today and told him, and he could have the option of having a special meeting just for that if we're done earlier and didn't wanna wait till the April meeting, and he agreed, but he's probably still hopeful that I would have a decision done by, by next Wednesday, but I don't, I don't wanna rush that. And after I do the final interview with the other candidate, then we will announce who those finalists are. And that's really what's been keeping me busy and touring schools. I met with your principal today. I took a tour of the On Point Program and V-19, which is not really called V-19, it's just, that's not the name of the program. I, all the facilities in back of the high school, I spent a considerable amount of time there today, my first visit there. The Quantum Leaf Program and Bridges Program. And I did have some comments from some staff members that they hadn't seen a superintendent out back there, but some, some good things going on there, and I was really surprised at the size of, and scope of what's going on behind high school, and just, just more of my tour of the Supervisory Union to try and get a real grasp of the scope of all the activities that are going on here.
Okay. Good. Okay, next we'll do the action items. Financial Treasurers Report. Did they?
Yeah. I brought Rick's packet because he is in Montpelier and didn't know if he was gonna make here in time his new treasury report. Yes, you may. And what else do I have here? The warrants, I believe, I put in front of Dave.
Yep. Okay.
There is a budget transfer request. Do you have that in front of it?
Right there. Yeah, that came in the packet.
Yeah. So that requires board action.
Okay, we'll take the Treasurers Report first. I need a motion to approve. That number you're seeing in the, the 96 School Bond, that actually should be 15,000, but there, that was another recording, it didn't get there soon enough or whatever, that, that was the same thing you had with the 1.5 million and the, I can't think what it was now, the assessment, whatever it was, for taxes.
Basically, right, our funding.
Right. And that was a recording, it, whenever it got there, it didn't get recorded, so, but that is actually 15,000, so next year that'll be down to five grand. So I need a motion and a second to approve this, the Treasurers Report, rather.
I'll move if we accept it.
Okay. Need a second, and then we, if there's any discussion, we can have it. Holly seconded it, okay?
Well.
For discussion.
I.
Go ahead.
The discussion piece that I have is, is to acknowledge that we have a new treasurer.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And that, just to simply inquire that, that all conditions and requirements for that position have been met. I, I wanna bring that up right now, because the new treasurer is David's significant other, and the question has been raised, is there a conflict there or perception of a conflict? And I think we, we need to make sure that we're all comfortable with, with what's happened and that the actual requirements of the state have been met, and she is in the proper position.
Are you asserting that?
No, I'm not asserting it to you, because I don't think it belongs to you, but I wanna be, whatever steps we have to make or have made.
Okay.
The, the perception is that, that this is a, obviously a money position within the district, and with David being a voting member of the Board that approves those allocations or acceptances, or the acceptance of this sheet.
Right.
Is that in fact proper and acceptable? I think the ball's in your court.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just verifying this, just so I can speak in the obvious. All right. So your wife is the newly elected treasurer of the district.
Of, of the town.
Of the town.
Of the town. And as such, because the Board has never voted to have its own treasurer, which it has the option to do, she, it's defaults to her to be the school treasurer.
Treasurer, okay.
So this is kind of a unique.
Right.
Little situation, and.
I'm gonna put that on my task list to get an answer for you, but I know you're a separate entity, that would be my first guess, but you are sharing a treasurer, so I see your point on like, say, what recently happened in Woodford, which is now gonna have two treasurers, one for the School Board and one for the town.
And I, the only thing that I can add to that is that, just informally, I asked the Chief Financial Officer.
Yep.
Mr. Pembroke, whether there was any concern, because I didn't wanna, obviously, be in a compromised position. And as, as I interpreted it anyway, the answer was no, there's no, no legal.
Right. What I, what I will do, I mean, I'll consult with the school's attorney and have them, and I'll pose the question with them, so that there is no question, so that we have a, you know, legal authority. I, I suspect the same, that it isn't, but let's not go on assumptions.
So in the meantime, I'll abstain from approving the report.
Yeah.
And that might be an ongoing question, too. Would you have to abstain from all acceptance of any of the work that she does?
So you can ask that.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. All in favor of approving the Treasurers Report? Unless there's more questions.
No more questions?
Yeah.
Then we're, we're assuming that everything is okay? Is that a safe assumption?
I, well, I'd say so, but.
Okay.
Yeah. And Jim is gonna check to be doubly sure, so I, yeah, I don't see, I don't see a problem myself, but that's my opinion.
And if Davis stays tonight, we should be okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Till next month, when we get a better answer.
Yeah, absolutely. So, all in favor of the Treasurers Report? And one abstention.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, budget transfer request, that's in the packet. And we also have the minutes from February 11th and warrants. Take all of these at once instead of separate. Is that okay, Richard?
Yeah, you're gonna do the budget transfer and everything in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Separately?
Well, we'll talk about it separately, but I wanna have one vote instead of doing them. So you got the minutes of February 11th. Any changes, comments?
Is the budget transfer, I can never remember how this works, are we transferring money into the retirement, Severance Retirement? Or out of that to cover the other areas?
Yeah, I forget where the.
On the Severance Retirement, it looks like there's a credit there, so that, maybe that's, there we go.
Salary library, library sub.
Is this your request? That's what it's listening to. Says per the request of the administration.
Not this administration.
All right.
Do we have any library subs that we had counted on when we budgeted? Was it the other way around?
No, we don't. We use the regular sub line for the library sub.
Why the need for these particular transfers? Do you have a?
Like I said, I wasn't aware of this. I think it's coming from Rick.
It's not here. So, I mean, you are not, if you have significant questions or uncomfortable passing, we could defer this to the April meeting, and with these, with this amount of money that is, that needs to be transferred, we're not gonna expend and delete any account between now and the April meetings.
Right.
If you're, if you're not comfortable passing it, my recommendation would be delay it too. I can either ask him, or he can be present.
Yeah, let's.
Well, one of these created a deficit in our, in our budget, and I was curious as to why that, that happened. And so I think there are questions about the need for it.
We can delay it. Let's, let's delay it instead of trying to.
Just table it till the April meeting?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we have the minutes, and we have the warrants.
I have a question on one of the warrants, Fran.
Yeah. Richard, I'm not gonna read these into the minutes anymore, just so you'll, it'll give you a break.
Good. Good. It'll be on voucher number 2010, page seven. Just a small one, Jeff, Southern Vermont Natural History Museum.
That's a gentleman that came and brought owl pellets to our third grade. His third grade dissected them and learned about.
I think the word that I probably took out of context was the presentation contract.
Yeah, yeah. He came in and did a presentation with the students, and they dissected the owl pellets.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And on the following page, which is page eight, the same one, well, it was covered up, Richard. I wanted to be sure I gave you the right information. Sycamore Landscaping.
Yep.
In talking with Jay at a town meeting, Fran, am I right that he said he's plowed 29 times this year?
About that, yeah. That's just what he said.
So, I mean, that's, for $1,000, that's.
At the, at the former rate, I think he saved roughly $3,500.
Yeah, yeah. That's significant. He needs to be congratulated or thanked for that.
Well, geez, he got a new truck, so he's, you know, wearing tires, nothing.
Well, that was, you know, I couldn't believe it when he said that, but it makes sense. And plus, plowing has been super odd, I mean, he's moved it where it needed to be.
Yeah. No, it's done an excellent job.
Like he said, he knows where the fire hydrants are. He hasn't broken one of those up yet. And another question came up at town meeting concerning the next item, TAM Waste Management.
Yep.
Does anyone recall if we received a summer break from TAM, or is this a uniform charge throughout the year?
I can't speak to that, but I can imagine, assuming there's still some trash that's produced during the summer.
Yeah.
When they do the summer cleaning and stuff.
So you think this would be?
Might even be more.
Yeah, it might, yeah, it might be with some of the stuff that we may need to, I could check into it, hopefully see.
I can, I'll put the task sheet, I'll be meeting with Rick tomorrow, I might as well, check into that one too.
Okay. Holly?
I'm, I'm new in these numbers, but I.
That's fine, ask questions.
I, I just was wondering, the bus contract, how many buses do we have running, and how many kids does, how many children are serviced from that? And I'm, I'm not looking to get rid of buses or anything like that, but I just noticed in being here at pickup time.
Yeah.
That they seem pretty empty.
Yeah, I think there's three, we use three buses from Dufour, I believe.
Yep.
Three different, yeah, there's three different runs, and I don't know what the, that question has come up before over the years of how many students I, I know I used to watch that, and I don't know, Jeff, if you have?
I have, I have. I don't have the exact number.
Okay.
And sometimes it'll depend on the day, depending on the actual program going on.
Right, right.
That question came up fairly recently. Holly wasn't here.
Okay.
I think the commitment was made, I think by Rick.
Yeah.
To have a survey done by Dufour.
They're gonna check that.
So we should.
You're right.[1789.83]
So we should, we should have that available by now.
Yeah.
To actually.
So I asked Rick about the student count, I guess on the Duffer buses.
Can I ask a couple more?
Yeah, oh, yeah. You tell me when you're done, that's fine.
This, this is a really small item, but it's a shipping cost, isn't this?
What page do you want, Holly?
Oh, I'm sorry, page number five? And it's just a shipping cost, aren't we a tax exempt organization? Do we have to pay shipping? Don't we have an ID number that we don't pay shipping?
We're supposed to pay shipping, we don't pay taxes, we're supposed to pay shipping.
Okay, thank you. On page six, there's a lot of postage. And I don't have a question about the postage, but behind that, I was wondering what the impact to the budget is? If I'm seeing right, if that's concerns per pupil, per pupil count?
Those, those postages are actually for the mailings for the town meetings and for the reports. That comes out of, I think Central Office does that for us.
Because they say records, so that's why I.
There may, there may have been, we may have had to send to Arlington, if we had to do the move.
I just asked, just, it caught my eye. I don't know if that's on or not, I tried to highlight it so I could.
No, that's fine, take your time, Eric, you've got some more to look and.
Just, and I, I, you know, I'm new sitting on this side and I don't know the numbers, but numbers catch my eye, I guess. The earbuds? Or, or the earbuds for the school outfitters?
What, what page?
Oops, sorry, it's page number seven, says school outfitters.
School, personal headphones?
Personal stereo headphones.
Yeah, we actually got a really good deal, because we had, which I'm going to talk about in the report.
They give them for the SBAC test, they have to.
The SBAC testing, computer test, we'll be taking there this month.
Those aren't the buds?
No, they're, they're headphones.
Actual, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we have a good deal, so we can supply every student with one for the testing coming up.
Thank you.
Yep.
All set, Holly?
I am.
Okay.
I had more questions on the one you passed, but that's okay.
Richard?
If, if Rick were here, he would, he would tell you guys that he would like, if you wanted to come down to his office for an hour, two hours or something, he'll give you budget 101.
I'd like those numbers, so that I can, the account numbers.
Yeah.
You don't need to wait for a meeting if you have a question, because oftentimes, we don't have all the answers here on the fly. So you, you can, once you receive your packet and you go through and you have a question, you can call in. And because the, the information might reside more in the office than here.
Okay.
Okay, Larry?
Concerning the warrants, I'd like to bring up a little bit of history that one of our previous board members was always concerned about. And that was the fact that the warrants come to us basically unchecked or unsigned from Central Office. And the feeling is that somebody should acknowledge that they take responsibility before they reach us. Because in signing them, I understand, we take the responsibility, so if there's something in there, we're held accountable, but we have no way of backing that up to, to say, well, it was checked before it got here. Pat Harris was the board member, and Pat and I have more or less followed the same routine, that we don't sign the warrants, basically out of protest, if you will, bring it to attention. We've talked to Rick about it, he's reluctant to do it. Perhaps putting the request in front of you would get us a better answer. You're assured of what I'm asking for?
Yeah, I, I am asking, I don't know what we, I'll have a discussion with him, and it would also include Jeff, because really, the bills go to us, we don't receive the items, they'll, they'll come here. So we're just processing paperwork. So if you're asking like assurance that everything that's on that is in fact Shasbury's, and you want him or some responsible person at the office to sign off that they have reviewed every item on it, and that it is in fact Shasbury with the correct amount that appears on the invoice, or something along that line.
Well, Mr. Pembroke put his initials on the memorandum for transfer, for the budget transfer, so when he does see the need, he obviously responds to it. So again, I, I would, I think that's in business, I don't think anything goes unchecked. Somebody always, you can always look to somebody to have had responsibility for, for the allocation of that money. And that's what I'm looking for here, is to just know that somebody takes responsibility before it gets to the board. Thank you. And there is a provision on, the funny part of it is, there is a provision on the front of the warrants that actually provides a space to do that, so.
There used to be.
It's been taken off? Okay.
What is that?
Cover page is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you saying that previously, there was a signature page on the cover sheet?
There was a provision where it said authorized or.
I believe you're right there, yeah, that there's something that was there before.
Rick picked a good meeting not to be here.
On the individual ones, it's still there, it says prepared by. And, and that's what I'm asking for, is just somebody, somebody put this together.
Yeah.
All I'd like to have is a trail back to that somebody, in case there is a question.
Now, I, I think, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right, it's Jeff Fortier that puts those together, correct, all the warrants? I believe.
It's different for each school district, so I'd have, I wouldn't want to say.
I keep forgetting.
This says Lingler created by.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, now, maybe the, confusing these two, maybe there wasn't anything on the actual warrant, like.
That, that's what I was conscious of, Dave, was that provision up at the top, and, and.
I'll attempt to have an answer for you at your April meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's new? Okay, Richard's pointing out that Jeff's name is on these, on the very bottom as a preparer.
Okay, alright, so I was right.
Laurie's is, it was all of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
You know, I, I'm just going to say that I remember certainly having this conversation a couple times anyway, maybe 12 months ago or 24 months ago and 20 months ago. And Rick was here and he attempted to address it and I think it's, the, I, I was satisfied because we have, we have an audit every year, the auditors specifically look at internal controls and, you know, has given us gold star ratings, so. The fact that there's not a signature, I mean, it does seem a little odd, since it does have a space for a signature, but I was always comfortable.
Right, and it is on the bar, created by, you know, there's one name, Jeff Fortier's on one and Laurie Linger is on the other, so someone actually did run, you know, the, who ran the reports' name is on it, but.
Well, I'd like to go back to the audit, Dave, as you know, and Rick has explained, as did the auditor, that they check only what Central puts in front of them to check. It's not an in-depth audit, they don't look at, they just look at process. And as Rick presents it, this is, this is what I'd like you to view as part of the process. It's, I'm not totally comfortable with that either, that, that the depth of, of examination is, is somewhat superficial, so. Again, it's, it's a request the board has never taken a vote on, but we put it out there, and again, Rick chose not to, to honor it, so let's put it out there again.
Okay. Well, Jim will check on that, talk with Rick, and then I'm sure this is going to come up again.
Yep.
So, alright, very good. Alright, so we got the consent agenda, the only thing we're approving is the budget transfer is out. Never was in there anyway to begin with, but we got the minutes and we got the warrants. Is there any other questions on the warrants or minutes? So I need a motion to approve. Dave and Jeff Lee second it. All in favor of the consent agenda? You voting, Larry, yes, no?
Abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay.
I'm abstaining.
And Holly's abstaining, so you've got two abstentions.
And Fran, you're voting?
Yes. Okay, next would be policies, there isn't any. Facilities? Nothing, okay, perfect. Okay, principals report.
You did have, you skipped on the funny, you took it off, you took that off, yeah.
Yep.
So as I referred to earlier, we're, we're gearing up for the SBAC test, which is the new statewide assessment replacing the MUCAP. It stands for Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. The window actually opens March 17th and goes all the way till June 12th or something like that, but we're, we're, schools were asked to pick a window to get the testing done. We're going to start our testing March 30th and go to April 10th, so have a two-week window for Shasbury. We can go over that if we need to get kids caught up on the test, but that's when we're going to start it. Teachers have been taking some practice tests, showing kids some practice tests, they've been doing some training online and researching, SBAC is, the state is slowly rolling out more and more resources every day on SBAC. We're approaching this as a first year, we're going to roll it out and see how we go, how we do. It's very similar to the MAP test that we've been taking this year, which is computer-based also. So that's a positive, the kids and the teachers have a little familiarity with that process. So it looks very similar to that. Any questions on the SBAC coming up, Larry?
This is the testing mandated by the federal entity? Okay.
And this particular test by the state, but it meets the federal requirement.
Okay, this is the one that the Secretary of Ed keeps telling us you have to do, or your funding's at risk, correct?
That's the one.
Yeah.
I'm also familiar with the MAP testing.
Yep.
Is there another level of testing that we're also doing here in Shasbury?
Oh, we do Ames Web testing also.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
Ames Web. Ames Web.
Okay.
Yep, which is a progress monitoring type test.
And who's driving that?
That's district.
We just do it as a self-assessment tool to see how progress is for the students.
Is there, do you, do you have a time element that, that that requires? One of the complaints we all have been aware of over the years is the amount of testing that's been required by, for us to put our kids through. And that one was new to me, I wasn't aware that there was another third component to testing. And I'm, I'm, I'm just curious what it accomplishes. I'm a firm believer in MAP, okay? I'm told we have to accept this one, okay? But I'm curious if the other one is optional, are we really getting value for it? Or is it just something else we're putting our kids through in an attempt to?
It's a, it's a, depending on the grade level for one, as far as time, it's, it's a little shorter for the younger students than it is for the older. It's more of a fluency test in mathematics and reading. So, you know, you understand fluency, as far as how fast they can read, that type of test, and we progress monitor that throughout the year, to see how students are progressing in their fluency in mathematics and reading. So it's a progress monitoring, specific areas in math and reading.
Maybe it would help, how often do they do that?
We do, we do the same time as MAP testing, it's three times a year, it's three benchmark areas. So usually, it's the month of October, month of January, month of May, we do MAP and Ames Web.
And how long does it take to take each test?
Again, it depends on, it depends on the grade level, kindergartners have a shorter version than, say, sixth graders do.
Grades three through, two through six, it would take approximately 22 minutes to be all told. There's two A-minute MAP tests, a three-minute reading assessment in fluency, and another three-minute reading assessment for problem solving. It's different in kindergarten, because there are two tests, one MAP, one reading, four minutes each.
These are taken on a computer?
No.
Or on paper?
The MAP is.
So the web part of it is not the worldwide, right?
No, but there's scores that are put into a database online.
Yeah.
So when would we see the results, Jeff? I mean, I think, I'm not aware of it, again, I was caught kind of flat-footed with that, because it's, you know, MAP I know exists, and I know that it's a daily, almost a daily assessment, can be made off that to some degree.
What do you mean a daily assessment?
Well, there was, the compilations of, of things that you're doing are fed into that on a continuous basis.
Not on MAPs?
Not on MAPs.
I'm, I'm confused what you're saying, Larry.
Maybe we should have a, a review of our testing procedures.
Sure.
So that we are all on the same page.
Yeah.
So you'd like at a future meeting a report of, here's our tests, here's what, here's the time of year we operate, and what the typical, and what we do with the results from those tests.
We're looking for our results and the amount of resource that we're putting into, to each element.
And the Ames Web and the MAPs test is not going to be like the SBAC test, like you're not going to see statewide results printed on those. Those are really, you could almost classify as a self-assessment that's done here, that the teachers will look at that data and decide, you know, where the weakness is that that particular child might have, or, so it's, there, there are no public, you know, published results on how that, on those two tests come out.
But that, that's the thing I'm concerned about, are we getting enough value out of that to be, if it's optional?
And we do have two new members, that it's new to them, so it would be a timely report to bring forward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on SBAC?
I have a question, and maybe it needs to wait for this full, full discussion of testing, but what is, what is Ames Web doing that MAP is not doing?
Sarah, I'll let you answer that. If you don't mind.
It measures different areas and it's more of a universal screen. I think, Larry, what you might have been alluding to was, that I think you're right in saying that when you take a MAPs test, you can find holes that maybe were missed instruction, or concepts that didn't get understood by a student. Ames can give you some of that same information. It also, it's not as comprehensive as MAPs is, but there are things that it does that MAPs doesn't do. MAPs doesn't give you a measure of reading fluency. Nowhere in MAPs does a teacher listen to a student read aloud and how they're reading. And base that against a target score. Yes, teachers see that every single day in a classroom, but not any formalized assessment like with Ames Web. So it, it serves a different purpose.
It's the same way with like math, math computation.
Math computation. So the, the MAPs has more word-type problems where the Ames Web gets just at the root of computation. It's just simple addition, subtraction, multiplication, division type problems.
I would suggest that we hold off and we'll, we'll give you a presentation on that, with, we have the scope of what it is that you want, so.
Sounds good.
Yep. And I'm going to put that, that, Jeff will do that, April or no later than May, meeting based on what else is on the April agenda.
Yep. Pleased to announce that the PTO applied for and received a LOES grant for $5,000 for improvements to the front of the school landscaping-wise. We're going to look at everything, we're going to kind of throw out to the kids and say, what are you guys thinking? What can we do to improve the look of the school? Some have asked for maybe a, a new sign, or an upgrade of the sign that we have, a new flower garden, some new plants out front. But we have a year to spend the money, so we're going to take our time and kind of plan it out accordingly and see what we come up with for, for that. You'll notice when you came in, in the library, the science fair is being set up for tomorrow night, fifth and sixth grade work on science projects for most of the, the winter, and they're putting the projects together now for display. So tomorrow night from three to six, the students will be here showing their science projects.
Two to six?
Three to six. Three to six. So if you get a chance, you want to stop by, it does some pretty neat work and pretty interesting. Along those lines, to add to that, the, the Mount Shire Museum is coming, January 23rd to 25th, and they're going to do science workshops with every grade level in our, in our teachers' room. The teachers chose a, a specific topic for them to do, and they'll come in, and they'll, the kids will come in for a good hour and do a workshop and experiment with the museum. No, March. Did I say January? Sorry, March 23rd, apologize. So in a couple weeks, March 23rd and 25th. Again, every, every student will get that opportunity to, to work with that museum. And that's, again, that's presented by the PTO, so we thank them for that. The Shasbury Historical Society reached out to me, I think, late January. It asked if we could do a partnership, they have a, a number of things they'd like to display on the community. With Coal Hall being limited, and now the country store no longer in existence, they asked if we could find a space for them to display some artifacts. If you'll notice, I was out there for town meeting, they put some things for Lake Shasbury, some history on Lake Shasbury. And they're going to rotate that display every couple months or so with new artifacts. I'm going to send out emails to families and, and send out flyers to families when there's a new display up. We're encouraging teachers to stop by the displays with their kids and the students and to talk about what's on the display. There's a little information sheet the Historical Society is giving us about the, whatever display is, there was a long write-up about Lake Shasbury. So it's, it's pretty exciting, they're, they're very excited to come in. It's Kathy Link and Barbara Reno. It's, uh, Kathy Link and Barbara Reno are heading that for us from the Historical Society. So keep an eye on that and, uh, check it out when you're here. Yeah, Larry?
Is there a liability to us for that? There's an umbrella that's gonna cover that?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Um, and I just wanted to mention one more thing that's on the report is, uh, Derek Carson from the Banner was here today. He's doing an article on our Minecraft EDU program, which if you don't know, Minecraft is a very popular computer game with students. There's an EDU or education version that we purchased last year. We started the program with an after-school program with, with a few students, with Sally Bisacchio, who's a technology integration specialist here in the district. It's moved now to a fourth-grade classroom. Ms. Klein's classroom is now doing it once a week, and they're learning, um, a boatload of different kinds of things about not just mathematics, engineering, social studies, science. Um, the, the program is pretty amazing, what the students can do, and Sally's done a wonderful job, um, directing that for us along with, uh, Collette Klein. So look for an article in the Banner coming soon about that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, Dave?
I don't know whether LOES sells bicycle racks, but I noticed that ours is.
We actually have a bicycle rack that was bought for it by sixth grade last year. We, uh-
Did we move it out of the, uh, for the winter? Was it removed?
No, it's a, it's one, it's one that we, we insert into the ground. It goes like this, and we decided, Jay and I talked about it, we said maybe we should wait till the parking lot project is completed before we made a final home for that.
So did we have a bike rack that got run over or something?
No, it, it, it'd been welded about five hundred times and it just finally, the last time it broke, Jay said, I don't think I can weld it anymore. So the sixth grade last year was nice enough to donate a new one. We just, it's one of those permanent ones that we can't move, so.
Waiting for the-
Waiting for the parking lot project, yeah.
Parking lot.
Yeah. Yep.
Anybody else? Anything else? Okay. My chair's report, I really didn't have anything, but what I wanna do is-
You didn't know you were gonna be chair, so that's one.
Thank you. I wanna start looking at the budgets, and I really wanna start the, our budget work earlier than when we did this, this past year. Only for the simple reason I think we oughta start talking about what I, like I said at the annual meeting, being more creative in our budgets so we can prepare for the future as far as keeping all our, you know, our computer programs, uh, keep everything sustainable that we have. And like the, um, uh, the program in Nature's Closet. Uh, Cl- Nature's, geez, sorry.
Oh, the store in Michigan.
Bad night. Anyway, uh, Nature's Classroom, uh, I think that's a, a really, uh, good and exciting thing for our kids. We may look at other things in the budget, you know, I, I look at, at budgets, what do you actually need, not what you want. And I've always done that. It's nothing new. And, um, because I think there's gonna be challenges coming up, and one of them's the three-year-olds for the school, and we're not gonna have any funding with that, so I wanna really watch what we're doing. Like I say, anything these kids need, I don't have a problem with. But we gotta, we gotta figure out how we're gonna sustain everything. And, and I say, you know, we, we only have fifteen thousand of debt left for this school, which is, is good. Uh, next year it'll be five thousand, and that'll be it, with the bond will be paid off, so. And I'm not saying I don't wanna put anything in the budget either. I say I just want us to critically think, what exactly are we gonna do? And I'd like to, you know, include teachers with that, staffing, uh, parents, I mean, really have a good discussion. Maybe we have a separate meeting for that, I don't know. But we really need, I really wanna look at these budgets and see how we could, uh, you know, be fiscally responsible and at the same time give these kids more than, you know, so they get to thrive on educational issues, so. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Ryan, can I jump on something you said?
Sure.
Um, I was gonna wait till other, but-
No, that's fine.
Along the lines of a, a different, a separate meeting?
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest for the board to consider, uh, a second meeting a month, at least from now until the end of the year. I think we have a lot of things to, to talk about. We have new members. I would, I would suggest the format be that we handle business in the first, our, our normal business or our normal meeting that we have.
We used to do that, yeah.
And, and then the second meeting, uh, should people choose to attend it, would become more informational. I'm not sure, uh, central off, or central administration has to be there, but, uh, I think we could, we could build an agenda, and if it required their attendance or their input, we could get that in advance.
Sure.
I really would like, and I know many times we, we try to make our meetings timely and, and, but lots of times things are left, uh, not thoroughly discussed, uh, and I'd like to, you know, give everybody the opportunity to do that.
Sure.
So I don't know that we need to decide that tonight, but I would like, you know, to, to put it out.
We can look, definitely look at it, and again, I, I don't think, the reason why we went to one meeting is because the superintendents were out every single night, sometimes two or three different meetings. And it, it's just, you, one person can't possibly do that, even if they do have assistants. It doesn't work. We know that it doesn't work. But anyway, no, I, I think you're right, we can look at that, and it, it's, um, I mean, I don't know, we really don't get a lot of, we used to have a lot of people come to the meetings, but I, I think maybe they think everything is fine, but I would like that input from the parents and things like that, and, you know, like academic things and all that stuff and what we're doing, or what are we doing wrong? I don't know.
Well, the second meeting would give people more opportunity to not come, I guess. But, uh, one thing I've noticed over the, the past, uh, five years, I've done a, I've been charting the, the budget vote, okay? And, uh, the gap is closing between the yeses and the nos, okay? So even though people haven't stood up and said, "No," there are more and more of them doing exactly that when the, when the time comes to vote, and I am concerned about that. That's a, that's an ongoing trend. Uh, this year, uh, the gap was the closest it's been. There was a hundred and seventeen people, difference in the people that said yes and no. So I'm, I think we have to be aware of the things that are gonna come at us that are gonna affect our budget and, uh, and put it on a higher priority.
What were, what were those two numbers there this year?
What's that?
What were the votes, yes and no votes, the, the actual numbers?
Uh, the actual, uh, total votes, and I'm not counting the blanks or the destroyed or whatever. I'm counting the actual votes that were taken. Uh, the actual, I believe it was four thirty-five. The yeses were two seventy-six. The nos were one fifty-nine, and I believe that leads to a split of one seventeen. That was this year. Last year, the same split was a hundred and twenty-six. And again, it's, it's a downward trend. Every year has been closer and closer to it.
Right, right, yeah. Okay.
And I didn't think this year's budget had a lot of, uh, a lot of issues in it that people were taking a particular stance against. I, I think there's, we've got to be aware that that gap is closing, and the time is gonna come when we may have to address a, a failed budget.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Go ahead.
Are we on to other or?
Yeah, we're on other right now.
I have a couple of others, but-
Go ahead.
Did you have one?
Well, I just wanted to add to that, what he's asking for in that second, being new. I look at this budget and I see some big numbers and, and things that I don't yet understand. I would like to see program, what makes up those numbers? What, the math program. I, I heard, uh, I heard about the, um, MTSS that has been implemented. I, I don't know what, I'd like to know more, just to be able to effectively-
Kim, should the new members, I know Rick has-
I've already met with Holly, and I, I would suggest that I think she could, uh, do an individual meeting with Rick, both new members, to do over the finance, and it, and I would rec, strongly recommend that you have a one-on-one meeting with the principal, and that would be where the best discussion for MTTS would be, and any other more educational, uh, you know, and you'll be contacted to come in for a meeting with me. I have a different series of questions for that, so, uh, we will give you a good primer on, um, on, on whatever your questions will be, so. And Rick will, Rick will be reaching out to both of you to come in for, uh, what he calls Finance 101 on that, and, which is different from what I met, I met with you, and again, Jeff will reach out and have a meeting with you, too.
My experience with this report, uh, has been that it's very difficult to glean a lot from going through the budgeting process. It became more apparent. This is really, you know, this is, this is a report printed out by the accounting bookkeeping software. It's not really designed for public consumption. It doesn't group things in a way that you would be able to calculate.
No, unless you knew all the code numbers and all of that, that would be-
Here's what we spend on insurance, here's what we spend on salaries, here's what the paraprofessionals cost us. Uh, you can, you can get that if you sort of go through with a calculator and add things up, but it's not, it's not user-friendly and, uh, I don't know whether there's, there's another way that-
If you had a, I mean, if you had a specific, right, if you had a specific question, then we can do a query of categories.
I'm not talking about that because you're always, I mean, the office has always been happy to answer questions. It's more of, you know, on a, on a regular basis, being able to digest it. It's, it's, I'm just saying it's tough, making that observation, so. But I also recognize that the, there's an alternative, there might not be an alternative.
Anybody else? Larry?
I've noticed in our, um, enrollment sheet that we get every month, we've dropped, at least as, as it's expressed here, we dropped a few numbers. We've gone from two forty down to two thirty-seven. And I also know that it's, it's very hard to get the, the actual count and the number of children that attend this school. So I'm, I'm, is there any need for concern there, number one? Are we, because we've made a substantial projection from this year, which was based on two, a base of two forty, up to two fifty. So I'm, I'm concerned to, um-
Is the trend's gonna continue?
Yeah, what are, what are we seeing here?
We've seen a couple of families move, that's, I, I don't, I'm not concerned.
Okay.
Knowing the families that have moved, I'm not, I'm not concerned. I don't think it's an exodus from Shasberry.
Do, do you have anything to balance that off with? Is, are there more inquiries coming to us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. My other other, whoops.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Dave's next, after you.
Okay. Concerns of parking lot, Jeff?
Yep.
I'm here a lot of the times to pick up grandson, and I'm usually here early, uh, and, uh, there's, I don't wanna use the word chaos out there, but- it, it's, it's pretty bad. One element I've noticed is the entry speed, okay? There are a lot of parents that are somewhat distracted and come in the door yard with a cell phone cranked to one ear and not really paying attention to, uh, the, the speed that they're, they, they're driving at. That's one thing. And the other is just the simple abandonment sometimes of vehicles in critical positions, like where our buses parked. I sat behind the bus for ten minutes the other day while somebody had previously pulled up, got out of their car and went into the school, and now traffic has backed up, uh, clear past town, town hall.
It's interesting you bring that up, Larry, because I've had that concern since I've been here, I, I added that lane.
Well, we seem to have a, a, a pattern before with cones and, and some, uh, some designation. I really think you need a presence out there. You need, you need a traffic control officer.
Well, we're actually talking with DeFour right now-
Okay.
And altering the bus schedule a little bit and trying to alleviate that congestion in there, bringing the buses in just a few minutes later all at once, rather than having them come in with the parents at the same time, and getting the parents out within the first few minutes of dismissal, and then having the buses come in and take the students when they're all ready to go. So we're working on that with DeFour right now and hoping to, I was gonna, we'll talk about that next month, but-
I really think you need somebody out there to, to take charge because, uh-
Well, it's, it's, you're right, but then, then it's a matter of the parents watching that person and following that person.
Well, I noticed lots of times there's out-of-state cars, that, uh, there's people that could, obviously maybe a grandparent or somebody that's come over, and they don't know, they don't know the rules, they don't know the traffic pattern, they just, they're here. And it, it's, it's somewhat comical, but it's really, it's, uh-
No, it's a concern.
It needs to be addressed, so.
Out-of-state cars, are any Massachusetts draperys there?
Dave?
We're on other here, right?
Yes.
A group of parents, Shasberry parents, uh, I'm part of the group, Mr. Skoggins is part of the group, have been working to organize a, a road, a road race in honor of our retiring gym teacher.
Oh, his parents, yeah.
To take place on Father's Day, June twenty-first, uh, in the morning, starting, uh, at Howard Park, ending at Howard Park, uh, appropriately, I guess, and running through town, across the highway, uh, into the Cleveland Avenue area, so. More details will be coming, uh, but anyone who might be interested-
How long a road race?
The five K. It'll be very, it's, it's intended to be a fun ride, so not, uh, not hyped to play this.
Sounds good. Holly?
Now, I got some things because I don't know if I missed my opportunities or not, so tell me if I'm asking-
We're on other.
When you did your committees and all that-
Yes.
Do we, was there an education committee or the MAU reps? Did I miss that?
Uh, no, I didn't, I did not mention education committee.
I don't believe we have one.
I don't, I don't-
Maybe you don't, I don't, I don't know.
That's, that's MAU and, and education committee.
And is, who is that? We don't have one?
No, you don't. The MAU School Board has an education committee. Shasberry does not have a, yeah.
I mean, you can attend that if you want. I mean, that's-
You've mentioned the PTO and the great efforts they're doing for all of our, can we send them a card? Signed by the board? I have one.
You can, yeah.
No, I mean us. We, as a board.
Yes.
They do a lot for the, the school as a whole.
Yeah, absolutely, you can do that.
To get back to Larry and the, the congestion after school, I, it's been a while, but Sue Green was always out on the, by the old bike rack that's now gone, and just that, there's, the, did those go away?
No, there's still duty people out there. There's usually at least one of us out there, not two of us out there. We usually stand at the end of the, end of the, um, walkway before the buses and, and watch the students that are getting on, and the students are getting ready to pick up. We haven't put anybody in the driveway to direct traffic yet.
I think that's more what he was, and, and I, I, I'm now the policy person, but I wasn't at the time, but there was a policy and there are policies, so I just would like to, and I did have a question, and I think Mr. Coquene already answered my question. Um, it, it has to do with our internet, our website, and I just noticed that we have an assessment number of fifty thousand dollars, and I didn't know what that entails, is that, um, that's not Chromebooks, that, but that would be them coming here to work on the internet, oversee the internet, the, the, like Mr. Barnes, that department.
Yeah, wouldn't that include licensing and things too, though?
It's, and you don't have to get to back-
Or is that something you should ask Rick? Does he know better?
Well, it would be more from Frank Barnes. So your, what your question is, you wanna know what the assessment for technology entails?
Yes, I, 'cause I know that there's a computer person here, but an assessment comes, strains in.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can get you the break down, but that, you, Shasberry pays a share of what, you know, the SBSU provides the internet access, so that could be your share of that, and the tech person who might not actually be housed in here, but is housed at Central Office that oversees that, it's your share of what that salary benefits are, and-
Okay.
Beyond that, I'd have to see what else got, but it, it gets built, um, from the total cost and then your percentage of that assessed to you.
I guess I would really like to know who's, who's, who oversees our internet, our, our-
Well, that's the Director of Technology, but you wanna know who does your website?
Who, I just had some concerns in, in looking through it.
Our website, our actual website, Elaine Hewlett does it for us at Central. But that's, she's the one that takes care of our website, but I'm not sure if that's what you're asking her.
And is it up to date?
Mm-hmm. So she's very good about keeping it pretty much up to date. She's, um, she was a former tech person here who moved to Central to take a position there, and she's, it's, it's a, it's a job that she's loved to take on, so we send her information as much as we can and she adds it to it.
I'll, I'll come to you with my concerns, 'cause I think that's how I was directed.
Are they different than what the ones that you expressed to me?
Yes.
About the, different than the missing link on the, uh, on the website? About the, different than the missing link on the, uh, on the website?
Maybe a little deeper than that.
Okay.
Anybody?
I could comment just from memory, uh...
Sure.
Isn't it the case that a year ago Frank came here and said he'd wanted, uh, the tech, all the tech support services moved to Central Office?
Yeah.
Uh, so that you don't pay your own tech person here now that's...
It was over a year ago, yeah?
Yeah.
Pay Central Office for tech support, so I think that's probably what the fifty thousand dollars is...
That is part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the tech support.
Well, well, my concern in, in look, being a new board member, looking at the, the policies and trying to, and who was your staff? I was, it's, there's some areas that are pretty outdated.
Okay, we can talk.
So I would like to see that addressed.
Larry?
I got one more final thing.
Dave, I hope so.
Monday night, uh, I attended a forum up in Manchester, it was put on by the, uh, local Democratic, uh, party up there, and, uh, Brian Campion was there, is our, uh, representative, uh, state senator. A fellow by the name of Michael Costas was there, and the Secretary of Education was there. And, uh, uh, it was quite informative, uh, I won't steal the secretary's thunder, but I think everyone's gonna be interested in her remarks, especially about, uh, special education. Um, I've called the Roland Harrell today to see when the article would be released. They don't have a release date yet, they claim to be rather shorthanded and whatever newspapers go through. But, uh, I think it's in preparation for a report that's, uh, the lawmakers have asked to have done, that's due to be released this month, and it's, uh, addresses Vermont's paraprofessional, and it's a study that, uh, it's an interim report brief, uh, in, in the form of a study, an intensive study that's been done, uh, by the University of Massachusetts. And I have a feeling, having heard her remarks and having read the, the pre-brief on it, uh, I have a feeling that, uh, she's, uh, um, as Jim would say, she's getting close to that third rail in discussing, uh, uh, special education issues, so, um, just, uh...
People should put them on their radar a little bit to, to see what's coming, so...
Anybody else?
You all, we have an executive session.
Right. Our next regular meeting is Wednesday, April eighth, and you have your budget status and your SVSU student aroma in there, and we need a motion to go into executive session.
For personnel.
For personnel. Dave seconded. All in favor, aye. Okay, thank you.